Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for this regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD, being held on February 16th, 2021. The time is 6:01. Uh, wow. First time in a year we haven't had to read the statement. So we will move now to item number two, Pledge of Allegiance, which is being led tonight by Mr. Mato Guedado, who is our amazing principal at Socorro Middle School. If you'll all please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and its symbol, to the republic, to its friends, and to God, the visible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Is Ms. Rodriguez with us?
Yes.
Yes? There she is. Hi, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hi, everyone.
And I have been asked to, uh, ask all the board members when you speak to please speak into your microphone so that everyone will be able to hear you clearly.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item number three, Superintendent's Comments. Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, President Najera, members of the, of the board. I'd like to first start off by wishing Ms. Cynthia Najera and Ms. Angelica Rodriguez a very happy birthday this month. Ms. Cynthia Najera's February 19th and Ms. Angelica Rodriguez's is February 25th. So a great, wishing you a great health and much happiness on their birthdays and many, many, many more to come. Happy birthday.
In tonight's time?
Yes, sir. And that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Well, exciting events coming up in our school districts include our seventh annual, seven years. I remember the first year with that we did this. Our seventh annual RoboCom, which will take place on February 19th and the 20th. It's going to be the first year that we do our RoboCom, this RoboCom virtually. Uh, but we're determined, determined to not allow this pandemic to get in the way of providing our, our students with endless STEM opportunities. So good luck to all of our aspiring robotic engineers. Can't wait to see what, what this year will bring. Another exciting event will be our Teacher of the Year Parade, which will be on Friday, this Friday, February 19th, 3:30 PM at our Transportation Department. Can't wait to see all of our amazing, amazing teachers of the year because we love, we love honoring our heroes in the classroom. So this will definitely be a, a memorable event. On that note, I would like to take, take a moment to, to thank all, all of our amazing, amazing Team SIS heroes across our school district. You know, we've been back on campus now with in-person instruction for two weeks now and, and things are going well. They're going smooth and also they're going, uh, it's, it's, they've been very, very, it's been very efficient. Our transition has been steady and careful with everyone on our team, contributing to setting safety protocols that we have in place and helping each other to make sure that everyone, students and employees, parents, all our communities stay safe. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Also want to thank our amazing, as I said earlier, our parents who will, who, who show their support day in and day out. This has truly, truly been a, a team effort. Also a giant thanks to our awesome maintenance, operations and facilities teams who worked over this past weekend, over the weekend and on Monday in freezing, freezing temperatures to make sure Team SIS campuses and facilities were functional and ready to receive students, uh, yesterday, Tuesday. So I can thank the amazing, uh, teams at the, at the, at the campuses and our maintenance and operations and facilities team. We greatly appreciate all of them. And I've said it, you guys have heard me say this millions, millions of times and I'm going to say it a million times more. You know, we do have the best team on the planet. So at this time, I'd also like to honor students and teachers, all right, for their achievements in our Board Honors this month. Due to the current situation, we can't bring them in here into the boardroom, uh, but they're still deserving of a moment in the, in the spotlight. So to honor these students and staff, we've posted an article on our website along with an animated presentation. Um, we're also sharing it on our district's social media account. So please share the stories, share the posts with your family, your friends so that they can applaud our high-performing students and staff. So this month, we're honoring, we're honoring quite a bit. So three SIS students for earning $200,000 of Quest Bridge National Match Scholarship. Congratulations to Russell Acosta from El Dorado High School, who's attending Columbia University. Also Amaya Flores from El Dorado, attending Columbia University as well. Joyce Cevallos from Eastlake High School, attending Grinnell College. Way to go, students. We are so very, very, very proud of you. Yes. We, next, we also have an SIS student who was the overall, overall elementary state winner in the 2021 Youth Art Month Flag Design Contest. Our first grader, our first grader was chosen to represent the entire state of Texas, um, the entire state in the Texas Art Education Association's Annual Contest. So congratulations to Amaria Adame from Carrasco Elementary and her art teacher, Ms. Claudia Cárdenas. We also, yes. Also had two SIS students chosen to have their artwork displayed in the state capitol, uh, through the Texas Art Education Association Youth Art Month Program. Extremely proud of Ms. Fayona Yang from Puente's Middle School and her teacher, Karina Álvarez. Also Matthew García from El Dorado High School and his teacher is Virginia Castañeda. Super proud of our art students, of our art artist. Next, we had 16 SIS music students named to the Texas Music Education Association, All-State Ensembles. These students earned top, top spots in the state in, in band, in choir, in mariachi, orchestra and jazz band. So in band, we had Angel Miramontes from Pebble Hills, Israel Vázquez from Pebble Hills, Javier Marqués from Pebble Hills, Osvaldo Rubio from Pebble Hills and the teacher is Mr. Max Sierra. Also Leila Palacios from Montwood High School, teacher Mr. Humberto Pérez and Micah Carrasco from El Dorado High School, teacher Carl Ortega. That is the band now in choir. We had A- Angela, Angela García, Angela García, Americas High School, teacher Ms. Janik McFarlane, Araya Labrado from Eastlake High School, teacher Liliana Labrado, Esperanza Herrera from Eastlake High School and the teacher is Liliana Labrado. Also Ms. Daphne Serna from El Dorado High School and the teacher is Tiffany Harper and Raúl Romero from Pebble Hills High School, teacher Mr. Joe Estala. Now in mariachi, we had Jennifer Bettencourt from Socorro High School, Jocelyn Bettencourt from Socorro High School and teacher Mr. Roger Rosales. In orchestra, we had Ricardo Chacon from Americas High School, teacher Adria Dunn. Also Sahid Palacios from El Dorado High School, teacher Frank Juárez. In jazz, we had Santana Rojas from Pebble Hills, teacher Mr. Max Sierra. Again, extremely impressed with our outstanding, outstanding musicians in SISD. In addition, we have students and employees who won top honors in, in the SISD Second Annual What's Poppin' Art Contest. Congratulations goes to Alisa Salgado, first place at James Butler, teacher Claudia Cárdenas. Alejandra López, second place. O'Shea Kelleher, teacher April Govea. Also Aubrey Pérez from O'Shea, third place, teacher April Govea. Also Amber Soto, first place. Herschel Antoine Middle, teacher Elizabeth Trow. Also Kayla Delgado, second place, Walter Clark Middle School, teacher Ruby Franco. And Shayla Almost, third place from Montwood Middle, teacher Abel Saucedo. Also we had Tanya Casas Ramos, first place from El Dorado, teacher Virginia Castañeda. Alexandra Langoria, second place, El Dorado High School. Miguel Picos is a teacher. Alexis Hernández, third place, El Dorado High School. The teacher is Mr. Miguel Picos. Also congratulations to our employee winners. Ruby Franco, first place, art teacher at Clark Middle. Eva Acosta, second place, art teacher at Keys Academy. And Ruby Franco, third place, art teacher at Clark Middle School. Lastly, we honor our SISD winners in the first ever citywide Racial Harmony Art Contest conducted by the Green Hope Project and the Black El Paso Voice. So congratulations goes to Jessica Castillo, first place, Clark Middle School. Jenna Thye, first place, Pebble Hills High School. Maya González, third place, Americas High School. And Azul Aragonés, third place, Antoine Middle. Awesome, awesome accomplishments by all. I'm just so, so very proud of them. So let's get on the round. As y'all know, as, as the list there and there's been several other throughout the months, throughout the years here in SISD, you know, just our students and also our, our employees, they continue to show why the Socorro Independent School District is a destination district. I am super proud of all of them. This concludes our Board Honors for this evening. President Najera, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Item number four, open forum. Uh, I understand we have, uh, board comments that were sent in that will be read by Ms. Macias. And then we do have one in-person, uh, open forum. Let me go ahead and read this part, Ms. Macias. "We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the board during open forum or in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our serious consideration." Thank you. And Ms. Macias, if you want to go ahead? Do you want to? Mr. Hill, thank you.
Okay, um, is it all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, uh, for allowing me here today. Um, first thing, uh, I want to, I know that we were hacked in December and on the paying the money back, whoever got, uh, overpaid, we already talked to Raza, but this way I know that the employees know that we're talking. That he said it would be approximately four increments that the money gets paid back. Oh. We good? All right. So I just wanted to reiterate that on here that anybody who got overpaid in December would be deducted in three to four increments. And I think he said nothing over 200. Because we got a email on employee that said that they were going to take over $600 out of her pay period. So I wanted to see what we can do to make for sure that doesn't happen. So. That's that. And plus I want to congratulate some board members because it's not only that you guys are up here doing the work, but when you take time out to come see our department, that's extra special. All six board members that are here today took time out. I want to say thank you, uh, to everyone. Paul García, sit there, amazing, amazing meeting. He even put on his profile picture, a nice picture of him in my bus. Eddie Mena, not only did he have a meeting, he actually went on my route. That was special. That's special to me. It's nice seeing you, Paul Gueda. Very informative. Thank you very much. Cindy, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Very good conversation. David, awesome. Thank you so much, David. Gary, Gary not only made the visit, but we actually got to clean Gary up. But he did great. He did great and he made the time and thank you so much, Gary. All right. Thank you so much, April.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you.
Three emails in front of me, two are connected. The first one reads, it says, "Dear SISD Members," can you all hear me well?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. "Dear SISD Members of the Board, my name is Gabriela Sanders. I write to you today in reference to an ADA accommodation relating to COVID-19 and its negative repercussions on my health if exposed to it. On January 19th, 2021, I emailed my doctor's letter to HR explaining my disability and request for ADA accommodations as prescribed by my physician. I immediately received a reply to fill out a request to work from home form. Within two hours from receiving, of receipt of the email and without my returning the requested paperwork, I received another email from the district stating my request for ADA accommodations was denied. On this day, I was denied the opportunity to submit the form that had been requested two hours earlier by HR. In this email, the district failed to provide me with an explanation as to why my ADA accommodations was denied. In just a matter of minutes, the district demonstrated little thought of care for my serious petition as permitted by the application process and failed to provide the reasons why he denied my request, therefore denying due process. Thus, if the employer denies the originally requested accommodation, HR has a duty to engage in an interactive process. On January 29th, 2021, my attorney filed an appeal with the district. On January 30th, 2021, I received an email from my principal informing me that she had discussed my situation with unstated individuals. In her email, she asked how she could support me. I emailed her letting her know that I was waiting for her approval on my accommodation and that I was ready to continue to work remotely on Monday, February 1st, 2021. I also replied to my principal that it is my understanding that a principal has the final authority in approving my ADA accommodations. My principal replied within minutes telling me to put in for more sick days and that she would update me if she heard from HR. On February 3rd, 2021, I emailed the district that I nor my lawyer had received further communication or updates on my appeal. I let the district know that this delay and lack of communication with me leaves me in limbo and has created a hardship as I am losing all my sick days. I also added that my students continue to suffer from educational interruptions, especially with a soon approaching benchmark testing dates. Furthermore, I let the district know that I do not wish any retaliation for this email as I am pleading for my health, my students' interest and my livelihood." This is the second part to her email that her husband sent. "On February 4th, 2021, my lawyer stated that he received a phone call from the district where he stated that I will require further documentation and that he will be sending the documentation tomorrow, Friday, February 5th, 2021. On February 9th, 2021, my lawyer left a message for the district. He requested a temporary accommodation but made while the committee continues to review my request. Later on this day, the district sent an email where he stated, 'Please review attached request and assessment forms. We have not received follow-up information related to your request.' On February 10th, the district was notified by my lawyer that these forms had been previously submitted and were redundant. The lawyer stated, 'Please be advised that all the documentation that you referenced below has been previously provided to the district and in abundance of caution and in order to save time, I have again attached these documents to this email response. In addition, I left you a telephone message requesting that Ms. Sanders' specific request for accommodations be temporarily granted while the district reviews her request. This should be strongly considered in light of the fact that there has been undue delay in considering Ms. Sanders' request, which appears to be a result of the district's handling of this matter. On Sunday, February 14th, I sent an email to my principal asking if I could log into my classroom to teach remotely since the entire district was on remote learning. My principal denied my request, wasting yet another of my sick days. On Monday, February 15th, 2021, my principal stated that HR placed me under leave of absence. She told me I am not allowed to return to work. This confused me since I was never notified that I was placed on long-term leave. I have been calling sick days while waiting for a response on my ADA accommodations. As of 2/15/2021, there has been no response from HR on the status of my ADA accommodations. I have lost 14 days of sick leave. Members of the board, are other educators given the same treatment when applying for accommodations or leave? Do we have a process in place for approving accommodations? Do we have a physician on the committee involved in this process? It is my understanding that others have had their accommodations approved. Is my disability less important? On Sunday, February 14th, the CDC director released the high-risk teachers should have options for virtual learning. I write to you, members, that it is unfortunate that I have had to seek support from my association, the EEOC, Equal Employment Opportunities Commission Office, Dr. Espinoza and now the board. I have been a faithful employee with SISD for 17 years, always continuing to have dedication for my work and community. Remember, board, this all started because I requested accommodations through ADA. I am advocating to you, board, to keep me safe. I do not want to end up with COVID and dead in a freezer truck. My family needs me li- leave, needs me to live. I have three children and a husband who needs me. Respectfully, Gabriela Sanders, proudest SISD teacher." The next email that I have reads, "Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent, I would like to address the issue that's still ongoing regarding those 29 students. Out of those 29 students, 21 of them were from Socorro High School. The excuses I heard as to why these 21 students from Socorro High, well, 29 is unexcusable. If the assistant superintendent knew, as she stated, there were issues when they should have been addressed to mitigate the concern, Superintendent, that 0.8% are the only ones that did not graduate that May, that is false. How are you even happy that was the word you used? That that's all you missed? That 274 actually did not graduate that May? Not 21 that you claim? 245 graduated after May? So, Mr. Morales, you are correct. It is that 7.8% but did not graduate that May. Leadership failed these students and parents. Yes, the board is responsible, but they entrusted in the superintendent, the assistant superintendent of high schools, the principal, the assistant principals to do the right thing. Also to say you are the only district in the state and the nation who have an internal curriculum auditor is completely false and misleading. There are other districts that have the same, similar or even better systems in place to ensure these things like this don't happen in their districts. As you didn't report it to TA like you claim, Superintendent, there is a big difference from self-reporting to asking for guidance. It's very disappointing to see a reactive approach instead of a proactive one. Last note, hospitalization rate is 20.14% as of Sunday night. Send the teachers and students home. Mr. Pablo Barrera."
Thank you, Ms. Macias.
Dr. Espinoza, can we please look into Mrs. Sanders' situation, please? Thank you, sir.
Okay, we will move on with item number five, District Reports. A Facilities Report, Mr. Iington.
Good evening, President Najera, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My name's Tom Iington. I'm the Chief Operation Officer for Socorro Independent School District. My Facility Report will begin on page number six. However, before we go into the Facility Report, I want to talk to you about Rojas Drive. Uh, this was discussed at our Facility Committee meeting earlier this month and the, the committee recommended me to inform the board that Rojas Drive in front of the DSC, uh, from basically Bob, I mean, Bill Burnett, where the expansion or the, uh, they installed a six-lane road from Bill Burnett to Eastlake is going to start construction from Bill Burnett to Joe Battle, which means right in front of the DSC. It's not a long piece of, uh, um, mileage-wise, it's not even a mile long, I don't think. It's six point something, .63 miles long. However, uh, it is in design. We've met with, I've met with the engineers and the city and it is in design. I expressed our concern about the DSC and the number of buses that are coming in and out of our property. Uh, if you recall, when they did Eastlake from Bill Burnett to Bill Burnett, they shut down the north side to construct the south side and vice versa. They'll be doing the similar thing with only two lanes going from Bill Burnett to Rojas. I told them that that would not be very beneficial for us because we've got 270 buses, 40 buses, somewhere in that neighborhood coming out. And we would need some type of left lane turn during that construction in order to accommodate those, uh, buses coming in and out. And then hopefully the, uh, the DSC will be completed by then and we'll have more people coming into this facility. So this is just informational right now. I do have meetings with Ms. Macias and Transportation scheduled. It is in design and it won't be let until this summer and construction won't start until this summer or actually November. And it'll take a year to complete. It'll be November 21 to the fall, to November 22, I guess. So anyway, this is just for y'all's information right now. We are working on it. Uh, we are meeting with the city and the engineers that are doing this. So is there any questions concerning that?
No, sir.
Okay. Socorro High School, the Reconstruction Project. That project is moving along. Package one is, is, is slowly coming to completion. Uh, last week, we had the, uh, ribbon cutting ceremony for the athletic and the softball, baseball field and the tennis courts. Uh, back in October, we received the band marching fills and, uh, some of the student parking has been completed. However, we're not using that student parking right now. Uh, but it is moving along. We're doing a lot of work along Rio Vista. The three lateral crossings are under construction and though are, those are to be completed by the end of March. This is some interior of what's going on inside the main building. Uh, the counselor's suite and then the, uh, the main kitchen area is being framed and we are doing a lot of rough ends, mechanical, electrical on those two areas. The dining room is being framed in. Uh, we've got views of, uh, some more of the area under construction. And as you can see, it's getting closer to the finish area. We are working with the El Paso Electric and the Gas, Texas Gas Service in order to get temporary power, uh, hooked up so we can move a little bit quicker. It's once we seal in the building and provide conditioned spaces so we can do some, start doing some finish area. Uh, the main corridor, the main hallway down on the left-hand side and then you can see the view of the three-story academic wing. The second project is Montwood High School. This project is also moving along. We have accepted some of the, um, areas and we are working on, um, finalizing some more areas. Uh, and there's a lot of finishing ongoing, uh, completions going on, installation of the elevators. We're doing a lot of mechanical, electrical trim out and then we're doing a lot of, uh, the areas that we have accepted. Some of the cafeteria and serving line area. We have, uh, are working on punch lists, and then, uh, we've also, um, got passed by the health inspection on, on some of the areas. This is, uh, some of the serving line areas on the left-hand side, and you can see, uh, a finished area of the bistro and the ca- dining room area. Uh, the band room area is, uh, is being completed. You can see all the baffles in the ceiling, and then you can see a view looking down Montwood towards the auditorium and the, uh, the auditorium area. And then the opposite side, you can see the fine arts looking back in the other direction down Montwood of the, uh, fine arts in the entry area. And then just an overview of Montwood. Next project is America's High School. America's High School is, uh, package one is, um, is completed, which is the sports line. And package two is the remaining buildings. We're doing a lot of demolition work on the interior building. We're doing finish work. We've accepted some of the areas, and, uh, this project is, is moving. Uh, we did have some, uh, and I'll give a little, kind of a synopsis of what Dr. Espinoza was saying that our team did at the end of the presentation as far as, uh, we did have some busted pipes at, uh, Americas, and we, uh, fixed those, uh, yesterday before the kids came back. You can see the exterior of the Science Lab Edition, uh, the dining room. We're demoing and in the dining room to expand that. Uh, the demo work in the band, band room is coming along, and then the rear view of the, uh, CTE area. New, uh, uniform storage room in the band room and a view of the, uh, entry passageway. Next project is Eldorado High School. This project is moving. Uh, we're doing a lot of finishing also, uh, doing some, starting some site improvement, working on some millwork. Our mechanical, electric, electrical and plumbing is ongoing, and we, uh, are working on punch lists on the areas that we have already received. This is the new choir guitar and, uh, piano room on the left, and then you can see that we've started some, uh, new parking area out in front of the, uh, Science Room area. Uh, that site work has begun. The Science Room Edition, that's a two-story addition on the left-hand side, and then the right-hand picture is the concession restroom area in between, uh, the, the athletic fields. The next project is the Student Activity Complex, SAC two. Uh, we have completed the design development on that, and we are moving in the construction document phase. And this is just kind of a review of what the design development phase, uh, finished as. This is the, uh, aerial view looking back at the district facility. The press box is the long linear building on the left-hand side, and then across the football field is the visitor area. This is just a, I know you can't really see it, but this is basically what the site plan will look like with the, uh, exists, existing SAC. Kind of widened out the oval to the left-hand side, and the new SAC is the, uh, one that is rendered out with the parking around the, around that. This shows the floor plans of the district facility, the press box area and the visitor area. I know they're very small. And then this is the second story of the press box area in between, uh, the, uh, towards the existing SAC. This is a, uh, aerial view looking back towards the press box and the, the new SAC, I mean, the old SAC is in the background. You can see the lights. This is a picture kind of walking in front of the district facility building, uh, at the end zone, south end zone, and looking north, you can see the video display board, which is on the north side. This is a entrance, uh, one of the entrance, the south entrance that goes in between the, uh, district building, the fine arts building, and, uh, to the press box. This is the, uh, interior shot of the, uh, district facility, the fine arts facility. This is the main corridor. We'll have a, uh, art gallery, uh, in that corridor with all of our fine arts or productions and, and pictures and stuff, similar that we have here at the DSC, but they'll have an area that they can display. On the other opposite side of that wall is a, uh, display cases that will be filled with all of our trophies and everything that we will be filling in there. The doors there goes into the, the district, uh, building or the district rooms, which is, you walk inside and there is three rooms that can be divided up into one room, two rooms, or, oh, or three separate rooms, or it can be opened up like this looking, uh, north over the existing football field towards the scoreboard. This is the entrance to the press box on the second floor, coming into the VIP or the boardroom. Uh, you can see that they'll, they'll come in, uh, to the, uh, right of the double doors where the gentleman is, is standing outside is a display case that we will be able to display all of our high school. And then you, you have a two-story viewing area, uh, upper one, and then down on the lower one is where the seats will be, uh, looking out on the football field. This gives you a little bit better picture, uh, with the, um, upper viewing and the lower viewing. And then a view from the press box over the field, uh, with the scoreboard on the north side. The next set of projects are the auxiliary gyms. I am pleased to, uh, inform the board that, uh, the bid package number one, which included six projects, we have received, uh, and occupied or started occupying four of the six projects, and the two other ones, we are, uh, waiting on final, um, um, inspections by the fire department and, and should be getting those here within the next week or so. But we have received Benito Martinez, Avita Chavez, Helen Ball, and Luhon Chavez as completed projects, and we have received those keys and have, uh, started our punch lists, uh, on those facilities after school hours, uh, with the contractors. And you can see, uh, Benito, Avita, Helen Ball, and then Luhon. O'Shea Kelleher and, and Robert, uh, uh, Itoarte, uh, like I said, are, are lacking some inspections. Uh, they should be finalized here in the next week or so, um, uh, with the fire marshal, and, and we should be able to take possession of the rest of the the package number one, which are the six initial, um, uh, auxiliary gym. Package number two, uh, we are, uh, continuing to work, uh, on site work, canopy erection, doing interior wall tiles, uh, metal coping and, and, uh, roofing and downspout insulation. We're also working with, uh, on irrigation in some of our, uh, facilities, uh, and then doing a lot of dry war, drywall insulation and duct insulation on package number two. As you can see, Vista del Sol, Horizon Heights, Loma Verde, and Myrtle Cooper, and then Sarah Vista. Package three is the one that just started, uh, the remainder of five schools. Uh, we are, uh, seeing a lot of progress on them with the, uh, uh, a lot of building pad, uh, footing preparation, and a lot of excavations going on on those. We're, we're doing restroom demolitions at Rob- Robert Rojas to get those facilities, um, up and running, uh, once the auxiliary gym is completed. As you can see, can Prestre, Escondrius, Hilly, and I don't know, that must be, should be in order. That's either Rojas or Waco. That's Waco. And then here's, uh, Rojas. This is the interior restrooms that we are, that stood vacant for a long time, and we're bringing those up to, uh, code and, uh, be able to use those uh, once the auxiliary gyms are completed. The next project is the Fort Service Facility, which is the technology facility out here. A lot of exterior work going on, a lot of walls sheathing, wall panels. Uh, finally seeing some, uh, windows go up on this south side of the building, which I've been, uh, worrying about when it rains and snows and blowing wind and stuff, but they're finally, um, getting those to where we can close it in. A lot of interior work is going on, on that building, and we should be hopefully completing that building sometime towards the end of March, first of April. As you can see, a lot of the exterior paneling or metal panels are going up on the exterior of the building. The new combo school in the Eastlake area, a lot of, uh, dirt work going on, a lot of excavation and prepping, uh, doing underground plumbing, um, and preparing for footings, uh, and then, uh, electrical underground also going on, on, on that campus. As you can see, there's a lot of underground work going on, and then once we start pouring slabs and stuff, you'll finally see that facility to start coming out of the ground. And the last project is the Eastlake, uh, and Pebble Hills Sports Line Package. That is going to be advertised here this week or next week, and we will have it, uh, bids, and then we'll bring those proposals to the board for your approval once we get the bids in on that. That concludes my report. I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Gata?
Mr. Gata, sorry.
Ayington, um, about Montwood, when are they gonna paint the roof red? I mean, green? I'm sorry. Now, how's it, how's everything going with all that?
It's, it's going fine. I mean, uh, you'll, you'll still see some of the green. It'll have some green trim on it, on the Montwood.
And I gotta help my buddy, Mr. Mano.
It won't be red.
Gary, if you need a tour, let me know.
But, Mr. Ayington, it won't have the metal iconic green roof on.
No, it's, it's, it's actually, everything is. Let me see. One more. Okay. You, the new building is kind of in front of it, but you'll still, you'll still get hints of the green roof and stuff as you go by.
Mr. Mano said he'd get up there and paint it to match the rest of it, too.
I'll help.
You help? I think we all should help.
Now, is there any, in any way we can do something about that? I mean, I understand if there's anything left to something to bring out some color there? I mean, like I said, I, it's Montwood, but it needs to.
Let me look and see how much trim and coping that we're gonna have going around it, uh, on the new interior. Uh, you know, so maybe we can highlight.
Even I see it that it, it needs, uh, you know, it needs a match. It needs its, you know.
Well, it will, it will. I mean, you'll still see the green roof as you go by. You know, we're not totally covering it up.
Yeah. Oh, Gary, see what's happening there is that, uh, you're not see, it's a flat roof. It's like a Santa Fe-style roof. You're just, you're gonna see the, the actual building itself, and behind it, you'll see the, the, the roof, the, the green roof behind it.
Okay.
Uh, you just have to drive by there and check it out. You'll.
Yeah, I drive by that all the time. It's, I just like, you know, you're used to seeing the green.
Yeah, you get used to seeing the green roof, yeah. That's Montwood.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
President Nayarre?
Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, uh, is this on? Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
One, two, okay. Um, no, just again, I cannot thank the, uh, Mr. Ayington and his team and the construction crews enough about what is happening in this school district. Um, you know, as I visit schools and you go to Benito, I go to Benito Martinez as an example, and the coach there is just so excited to receive those keys for his multi-purpose room for those awesome students at, at Benito Martinez and all the multi, the auxiliary gyms that are going up across the school district. I mean, it, it is, uh, an exciting time, you know, for, for those, uh, those specific communities. And also, you know, and you mentioned, you know, Montwood, Eldorado, and, and America's High School. Um, you know, our schools, all of them are, are six-A schools, um, except Eldorado High School, which is a five-A school. But, uh, we anticipate here in a couple of years, in two years possibly, that it's gonna be a six-A school, which means they just have so many students in the building. So, Exhibit A, Montwood, I mean, drive by Montwood, and it just looks beautiful. They're gonna have a bigger cafeteria, auditorium. Uh, it's just remarkable to see what's happening, uh, at, at, at those high schools. And also, um, you know, and it was mentioned earlier, I forgot who mentioned it. Uh, we were down at Socorro High School last week, and just to see the, the softball field, the baseball field, but the tennis courts as well. In the past, they only had eight tennis courts. This time, that coach, co- the, uh, the, our tennis coach at Socorro High School and those tennis players, they're gonna be so excited to use that state-of-the-art, those tennis courts, which in the last year they had, in the past they had eight. Now they're gonna have ten. So, it's truly, uh, like I said on, on Thursday, last Thursday, it's remarkable to see because while these players this year, these student athletes are gonna get to use that softball field, baseball field, and also the tennis courts, but all those students at Sanchez, at, at, at Cerna, at Socorro, at Campestre, Hilly, when they grow up, they're gonna go walk into this state-of-an-art facility, and it's just, like I tell people, while we have some amazing employees in SISD, you also need the facilities, uh, to go along with, and that's why we are in a district. We're a destination school district. Families continue to move in because they want to be part, uh, of this awesome, awesome, of the awesome happenings here in SISD. So, again, Mr. Ayington, to you and the entire construction team, they just continue to move, move along dur- during this pandemic. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Ayington.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. I, I did mention something during my presentation. I was gonna talk a little bit about what happened yesterday and, and over the weekend. I mentioned America's High School. We also had some minor leakages at Butler, Pebble Hills High School, and then at the Transportation Center. And then we also had to take some heaters out to Helen Ball and to Rojas. So, uh, I appreciate all the words you said to, about the maintenance and operation, and I will forward that to them, uh, the next time I meet with the directors and everything. But we are, uh, we are, our custodians did show up, uh, yesterday to survey the schools. I think we had a busted Hobbs bib outside, but that was related to construction, so. Uh, but anything that was related to construction, uh, our construction managers or our contractors on that particular job made good to fix those. Uh, but unfortunately, we did have some, uh, units that failed and, and the water, uh, froze, and we had some busted pipes, but we res- we resolved that as of yesterday.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ayington.
Tom, thank you for your, your transparency and your honesty. I appreciate that so much. Way to get it done. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We will move on to item number six, Consent Agenda. Are there any items to be pulled?
President Nahara? Is, uh, is, is chief around to give a quick little update on one of the items?
Which item is it?
I think it's, uh, G.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and, and pull that?
It is a resolution. Does it need to be read? Ms. Nahara?
Um, hold on just a second. No, as long as it's published, it doesn't have to be read.
Okay.
Okay?
Also, uh, Ms. Nahara, if we could, uh, Item D, uh, two and three. We have, uh, I'd like to have those pulled so we can discuss them because we, we missed the, uh, financial meeting yesterday, so we're not aware of some of the, uh, vendors and uh, those that, uh, we're not aware of some of the vendors and those that we're gonna approve.
So it's item D two and three?
Correct.
Are there any others? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent, consent agenda with the exception of D two, M three, and G.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez to approve consent agenda with the exception of items D two and three, and item G. It was seconded by Mr. Gondeta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And we'll start in order, Mr. Morales, item D two, pump and motor services and repair.
Yes, who would that, oh, Mr. Garcia, I figured that would be you.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Yes. Can you kinda talk to us a little bit about this and the particular need for it, and who are vendors?
Sure. So under consent agenda item six, D two, pumps and motor services, this is a calendar contract. We invited over 100 vendors to this solicitation, and we're making a recommendation to Technical Building Services. The annual contract allocated for this is 150,000 per year.
Okay. And item three?
And item three?
I'm sorry, Mr. Morales, we have to approve this item first.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna go as a...
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion, motion approved.
I have a motion to approve item D two by Mr. Morales, and a second by Mr. Gondeta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And now, item D three, Mr. Morales.
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, refrigeration and air conditioning maintenance and repair. This is an, it's a calendar contract. It's a three-year contract with two possible one-year extensions, and we're recommending, we did receive three responses with this submitted, and we're recommending Technical Building Services at $400,000 per year if needed.
Motion, motion approved.
Second.
I'm sorry, was it you, Mr. Mina?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion by Mr...
Thank you.
I have a motion by Mr. Morales, and a second by Mr. Mina. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Okay, item G, consider approval of resolution for body worn cameras and police bike patrol grant.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. It's an opportunity that we've been working on for some time, even prior to COVID, and finally, for the first time, the Office of the Governor has included school districts in the opportunities for obtaining body cameras for our police department. And so we've gone through all of the necessary process, other than getting the proclamation adopted, and that's what we're kinda hoping for this evening, to go forward and seek funding to start up the body camera program for our police officers and also a bike patrol. These two opportunities are available through the Office of the Governor and through the Council of Governments locally. So if you all would like, I'd read the proclamation for you, or do you have any questions?
I do have some questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
Any idea as to which kind of, what kind of bikes the force would get, or?
These are, and I apologize, the brand escapes me, but they're similar to the ones that both Border Patrol and the El Paso Police Department are using right now.
Okay. Any idea how many officers will get trained?
Five.
Five?
A total of five. We have one already. Because of COVID, we've had the class postponed twice, but by the end of April, we will have all five.
Awesome. Thank you so much for this. I think this is very innovative. It's great. I think it's a great thing for our...
Yeah, with the creation of the second SAC, it just makes a lot of sense to be able to have that type of mobility on the ground. Thank you, sir. Motion to approve.
Just a quick comment. I remember we discussed that about a year ago, this initiative that you were trying to put some congratulations to.
Well, thank you. Thank you. We hope to get funded.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Mr. Garcia, and a second by Mr. Gondeta?
No, Mr. Mina.
No.
No.
Who seconded? Was it Mr. Garcia? No, he, no, he said it.
Mr. Garcia made the motion.
I seconded.
You seconded. I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion? Thank you, chief. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, new business A. Consider approval of notice of separation incentive.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Rudy Campoya, Chief Human Resources Officer for the school district, and I am here tonight requesting your approval for the district to offer a separation incentive for classroom teachers, administrators, or other professional exempt staff that are assigned to a school site who plan to voluntarily resign their position with Team SISD at the end of the 2020-21 contract year. We will offer an incentive of $500 to the first 75 employees in the above-mentioned categories who submit their written notice of separation on or before March 31, 2001, 2021. With your approval, notices will be delivered tomorrow via email, and the financial impact with this incentive would be $37,500, should 75 employees take advantage of it. So at this time, administration recommends approval as presented.
Motion to approve. Neither were.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Getta, and a second by Mr. Mina. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Campoya.
Thank you.
Item seven B, consider approval to authorize administration to negotiate a fee for the maintenance facility.
Good evening again. On page 72 of your booklet, there is an agenda item that authorize for administration to negotiate a fee for the maintenance facility. The maintenance facility is the facility, the last remaining project of the 2017 bond program. We have everything under contract, and the maintenance facility is a part of the 2017 bond. The intent was to move some of the departments to a centralized location in order to better utilize the district in a centralized location, meaning somewhere in this area or around the SAC or wherever we could potentially place a facility. The approval tonight would let us to start negotiation. We selected three firms from a list that the board has already approved for the district miscellaneous professional services, district-wide, that was approved back in March 27, 2018. The three firms that are listed here in order of preference are firms that have done similar scopes of work in either facilities as far as maintenance and operation goes, or warehouse facilities, or coming in and assisting people with developing a scope of work in order to develop a concept. So the authorization tonight will allow us to proceed with the negotiations as we've done in the past, following the procedures that were outlined back in March 2004. That's what, 17 years ago, that the board has put into policy. We would negotiate, beginning with the top firm. If we do not reach a reasonable fee, we would cease that negotiation and move to the second, et cetera, and then to the third. If we don't come to an agreement, we'll come back to the board and ask for other recommendations. But I can tell you, in my 18 years here, we've never made it past number one. We've always seemed to been able to negotiate a fee, and that fee will be brought to the board for y'all's approval. So administration has recommended approval to begin negotiation with MNK Architects to bring a fee proposal to the board at the next meeting.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Garcia, and a second by Mr. Getta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Arrington.
Thank you.
Item seven C, consider approval of TASB update 116 and local policy. Ms. Macias?
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Administration recommends consideration and approval of the revisions to TASB update 116, policies CQB, DCD, DCE, FFAC, and GKA, and local policies CR and CRF. They are found in your board book on page 74. At this time, administration recommends approval to the policies as listed in the board book.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta, and a second by Mr. Gondeta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Macias. Item eight, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel for discussion regarding personnel matters and update to discuss real estate matters, and to consider administrative recommendation for principal position at Robert R. Rojas Elementary School, and assistant principal positions at various campuses under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. The time is 7:04. We are back in session. The time is 8:40. We will continue with item number nine, new business A. Consider approval of administrative recommendations. Dr. Espinoza, A1, principal for Robert R. Rojas Elementary School?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board. Administration recommends Ms. Jennifer Marquez to assume the roles and responsibilities as a new principal at Robert Rojas Elementary.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta, a second by Mr. Gondeta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Are you abstaining? And the motion carries. A two, assistant principal for Dr. Sushuk Elementary. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board. Administration recommends Ms. Nelda Hurtado to assume all the roles and responsibilities as a new assistant principal at Dr. Sushuk Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gondeta, and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item A three, assistant principal Mission Ridge Elementary. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board. Administration recommends Ms. Sandra Aguirre to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as a new assistant principal of Mission Ridge Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Mina, and a second by Mr. Gondeta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is 8:42.